Good evening. This is the August 16th, 2018 meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. We're meeting in town council chambers. It's now 7:02 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Okay, will the commission please introduce itself, starting on my right?
Ryan Condon, alternate.
Kenneth Wilk, alternate.
Jonathan Formicella, alternate.
Bruno Mayini, commissioner.
Manon Rosi, commissioner.
William Porter, chairman. Paul Leacy, secretary.
Michael Riley, vice chairman.
Paul Agresta, planning and zoning administrator.
Scott Schatzlein, land and real estate director and town engineer.
Thank you. Item number three, organizational and administrative matters. We have nothing. Item four, general public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on an issue that's not related to a public hearing? Seeing none, we'll move on. General appointments, we have none. Public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. I will read the instructions for the audience concerning public hearings. There are two sets of microphones for both public address and recordings of the proceedings. Due to the need for recording, it is important to stand at the microphone at all times and speak into it loudly and clearly in order that everyone in the room can hear and to capture what is being said. Individuals speaking from the seats will not be heard and will not be recognized to speak. Order of the Hearing of an Application. Points of order and responses will be entertained. Exhibits will be read for the record. Applicant and their representatives will present the application and will answer commission questions. The floor will be open to those in favor. The floor will be open to those opposed. The floor will be open to general comments or questions. The floor will be open to the applicant who may take the opportunity for closing remarks or rebuttal, after which discussion will close. The applicant or his representatives are the final speakers. No comment shall be accepted from anyone unless recognized by the chair. All questions and comments shall be addressed to the chair, who will determine if an answer shall be provided and by whom. There shall be absolutely no discussion between speakers and audience. The commission has no intention to limit the right of any person to speak, but asks that speakers try not to be repetitive. Please try to present new information. If something has been said before, the commission will invite you to indicate your agreement with previous speakers. At no time shall there be displays of emotion such as applause, cheering, shouting, or similar noise. This is critical as this hearing is being recorded. If this happens, you will be cautioned. A vote or demonstration by a show of hands, standing by the audience, or similar action will not be recognized. All parties are requested not to talk between themselves while the hearing is in progress. If you feel the need to talk, please step out into the lobby. All, excuse me. All speakers, when recognized, must advance to the microphone to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. The chairman reserves the right to cut off discussion if it is not relevant to the application or is presented in an inappropriate manner. This is a legal proceeding, much the same as what would occur in a courtroom setting. We request that all parties observe the proper decorum that would be observed in that setting. Please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. If you have a need to use these devices, please leave the room and use them outside. Okay, our first item, SEP 2018-03, file number 15988, 205 Monroe Turnpike, has been adjourned to September 6th. Item number nine on the agenda, SEP 2018-07, file number 1602A, 485 Pepper Street, has been adjourned to September 6th. Item number 10, SEP 2018-05, file number 1600A, 27 Main Street, has been withdrawn by the applicant. Item number 10. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute 8-7D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Ball Council Chamber, 7 Van Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, August 16th, 2018, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter concerning the following. SEP 2018-04, file number 1599A, 10 Victoria Drive, Industrial District 3. Special Exception Permit Application by United Mining Northeast LLC, the applicant, for the construction of an approximately 68,000 square foot industrial manufacturing facility, including interior manufacturing, office, warehouse, and storage space, with multiple accessory exterior storage silos and related dust collector equipment and apparatus, as well as associated driveway, parking, drainage, and utility site improvements. The proposed manufacturing facility will process recycled glass into a material used in the preparation of concrete as a fly ash alternative. Kimball Land Holdings LLC and Kimball Development LLC, property owner. Complete details and copies of all related materials associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing in Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices. Okay, Will, what do we have for exhibits?
Exhibit one, special exception permit application. Exhibit two, project narrative. Exhibit three, origin of lot report. Exhibit four, butter's list. Exhibit five, bond estimate form. Exhibit six, engineering report. Exhibit seven, plan set. Exhibit eight, fire marshal A R T comments. Exhibit nine, building official A R T comments. Exhibit 10, revised engineering report from the applicant. Exhibit 11, revised plan set by the applicant. Exhibit 12, revised architectural plans by the applicant. Exhibit 13, A R T comments from Conservation Commission. Exhibit 14, planning department comments, A R T comments. Exhibit 15, town engineer, A R T comments and bond estimate. Exhibit 16, traffic impact study, booklet and CD from the applicant. Exhibit 17, A R B recommendation. And exhibit 18, public hearing notice, receipts.
Okay, for your applicant.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name's Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering, offices located here in Monroe, 501 Main Street. With me here this evening is Doug Rich, landscape architect, from my office. Gary Capitania from Borgese Building, the projects architect. And I believe we may have some other people joining us from the operators themselves, but they, because of the agenda, they may be showing up a little late. But nonetheless, we're going to proceed. So, we're here tonight to talk about the proposed development of a piece of property at 10 Victoria Drive for the development of a positive manufacturing facility. So just to orient everyone, this is an area of the town of Monroe. Victoria Drive and the subject site is down along the southern reach of the town. You can see Route 25 runs north-south along the western edge of town, and this property is located just north of the town line of Trumbull. You can see, here's the border between the town of Monroe and the town of Trumbull. Just to the north, this is the old Shea Vitamont facility. The Swiss Army corporate headquarters is located just to the south of our subject property, and 10 Victoria Drive is located in this area here. So this property has gone through several approvals in front of this commission. Most recently, there was an approval for a proposed Walmart Supercenter, located on the same exact parcel. And late last year, they elected to, after a long process, they elect for the construction of that store. So we're left now with a piece of property that's currently available once again. And we are looking to construct a proposed manufacturing facility totaling 68,000 square feet, 68,761 square feet. This includes 3,000 square feet of mezzanine office, 1,427 square feet for a first-floor office, 2,024 square feet of a maintenance shop area, 33,622 square feet of manufacturing area, 15,000 square feet of unheated storage space for raw materials, and 13,688 square feet for material processing and handling. So just to talk a little about the operation. So positive is a green use, that's an alternative to fly ash, to be used in cement and concrete. As the commission may or may not be aware, making construction aggregates and construction concrete is a very carbon-intensive use. And positive is a recycling operation, which basically brings in raw material of glass, which is diverted from landfills. It then goes through a processing facility, and we create a material that's essentially a very fine sand, which can replace fly ash and concrete, which represents a number of benefits, green and environmental benefits, as it diverts a lot of material that's currently going to landfills into a recycling opportunity. It also considerably reduces the amount of carbon that's required to build, to create both cement and concrete. And the proposed operation here in Monroe will actually be a model of how this type of operation can actually be implemented and create the positive environmental benefits associated with it. And thankfully, in this application, everything is proposed entirely indoors, inside, to make sure there isn't any adverse impact to the environment or any of the surrounding areas or neighbors. So, the subject site is just over 25 acres, as you can see. It's, again, formally approved for a, or most recently approved for a very large retail building and associated parking. We've designed this operation to try to push the operation as far away from the surrounding residential areas. Just to the south of our site is the Swiss Army corporate headquarters. To the rear and to the north are some residential areas. And then further west, Victoria Drive continues up to Route 25. Ole Soccer is just on the other side of the Paquannick River. The Paquannick River, west branch of the Paquannick River, does meander through to Victoria Drive, crosses underneath Victoria Drive, and continues further south towards the town of Trumbull. So our site proposes, as I said, approximately 68,000 square foot industrial building. We've provided with 105 parking spaces. Of those 105 parking spaces, we are proposing to defer 15 parking spaces. Now, from an operations standpoint, we've provided parking based on the required parking as established in the zoning regulations, based on the proposed square footages of office, manufacturing, storage, et cetera. However, from an operational standpoint, this will have a far less parking demand, as the number of employees on this site are going to be far fewer than the 105 spaces that we're required to provide. But from an operations standpoint, so what's going to happen is this product will bring in raw material. That raw material will come in, coming through Victoria Drive, the primary site drive. It will cross over an in-ground truck scale to be weighed. That material will then continue into a tipping floor, which they're going to, the trucks will come into a building, they will offload material, they will leave the building, and then they will leave the site as they continue on with their empty materials. That material is then taken from the tipping floor, it goes through a proprietary processing operation. It will be stored in a series of seven storage silos adjacent to the building in this location here, which will be neumatically fed from the building itself and then from the storage silos. That finished product will be neumatically fed into loadout silos, so that essentially the material will be distributed via tanker trucks. So similar to what you see with, you know, like a gas truck or a pool water truck, that type of truck will actually come through, it'll drive underneath a loadout silo, it will be fed with the finished product, and then that material will be brought out to wherever its eventual home will be. We've designed the site to accommodate not only those operations, but also the storage of trailers. So from an operations standpoint, based on production, based on market demands, there is an intent to allow for approximately 20 trailers to be stored in this area here. Some of those will be empty trailers, some of those will be filled with product, but those will continuously come in and out based on whatever the demands are, the production levels are, the requirements of the market, et cetera. So from a finished product standpoint, you may come through the loadout silo, those trailers then may come around, be stored here, and then either left, and there'll be a truck on site to pick up new materials, et cetera, pick up trailers, bring them in and out as needed. So all those operations operate in the front of the property, and we've actually designed this to ensure that we're providing the maximum buffer from our residential neighbors to the north and to the east, so that all of these operations are faced away, they're facing towards Main Street, towards Route 25, to provide that additional buffer. And again, all of this, everything happens completely enclosed, either indoors when they're offloading material, or when the finished product is loaded through that silo directly into that tanker, to make sure there's no issue or impact to anybody. There is a, we're proposing an overhead door for this maintenance shop, just for any maintenance that may be required for any equipment on the property. There is a covered loading dock in this location here, which could be used if any material is distributed from a palletized standpoint, that's what would happen through this loading dock area, or any deliveries which may come into the machine, to the operation. And then towards the rear of the site, this smaller building, this smaller building here is just a 15,000 square foot, unconditioned, so it's not heated, not cooled, basically building for just the storage of finished products, once it goes through a processing area, or actually maybe the raw materials. And this all is connected internally through this area, so that, again, there's no external operation from a manufacturing facility or anything like that. We are proposing spaces to be deferred in this location here, and we have identified a very small outdoor storage area to be located in this location for, if there's any parts that may come in as part of the operations, they'd want a small area to allow for that outdoor storage area. We've identified approximately 3,560 square feet for outdoor storage, which represents approximately 5% of the overall building area. When, again, in the zone, we're allowed to have 20% outdoor storage, or far less than that. In accordance with the zoning regulations, we do have the seven storage silos and these two loadout silos, as I mentioned. In accordance with the regulations, we are allowed to have storage silos, provided that they do not exceed 10% of the overall floor area of the building on the property. And those storage silos represent approximately 2,380 square feet, which is about 3.4% of the overall building area. So both the small outdoor storage area that we're identifying towards the rear of the building and the storage and loadout silos are both within what's allowed underneath the zoning regulations. I will say, so we did receive comments from both the town planner and the town engineer. Obviously, the new process is, we receive these comments, we come and present to the commission, we get the commission's insight and thoughts, and then we work on revised plans following this initial hearing. As always, we end up kind of trying to see, pick off the really easy ones that we can incorporate. So a lot of those changes have actually been made into the plans that I'm presenting this evening, but we'll provide a formal response to comments and revised drawings after this hearing that address all of their comments, in addition to anything the commission may have. From a grading and drainage standpoint, the site is actually somewhat in a bowl. You can see the elevations around the perimeter of the property are considerably higher. There's a pretty steep slope around the area here. We've designed the site to maintain that. We've actually been able to design the site without the need for any retaining walls. We do have a slight cut towards the rear of the property here, but that's kind of offset from the fill condition here. The site's been designed from a grading and drainage standpoint in accordance with quality manual, as provided by D E E P. We are proposing a large stormwater detention basin in the southwest corner of the property in this location here, similar to the design that was done as part of the previous approval on the property. We were able to utilize a lot of the testing and such that was done as part of that approval to ensure that this area is the most optimal location for stormwater detention basin. There's incredible infiltration available in this area, so that the stormwater that comes in, it will all be collected through a series of catch basins and pipes. They will all be treated through mechanical measures of a hydrodynamic separator prior to discharge into this detention basin to remove that 80% of the total suspended solids as required by D E P and the town of Monroe requirements, in addition to the MS4 permit requirements. So we've incorporated a swale towards the rear of the property to catch any surface drainage which may come down from the steep slope in the back. That gets routed around and collected and discharged into the basin. All the roof runoff is collected and discharged into this basin as well. So the site itself, you know, the site's approximately 1,500 feet from Route 25, so it's set far back down the hill from Route 25. It's sunk down, down the hill from the surrounding properties to the east and to the north. So it really is somewhat contained, and we've designed the site to ensure that it will not have an adverse impact to any of the surrounding areas. From a soil erosion sediment control plan, we provided a soil erosion sediment control plan in accordance with the 2002 Soil Erosion Sediment Control Manual, as provided by D E E P. We've incorporated a series of silt sacks and catch basins, silt fence around the perimeter. We have hay bale backing in certain key locations and designed the actual sediment traps to ensure that during construction, it is constructed in a way that will ensure that no sediment-laden water will leave the site and there will be no adverse impact to any of the surrounding or natural resources on the property. I will say that I failed to mention, the overall property, there are wetlands located on this property in the northeast corner and the northwest corner of the property. All of our proposed activity is outside of that 100-foot regulated area. We've been able to actually maintain all of those areas. Our proposed activity is only within the complete upland area, not the upland review area, just outside of that area. So this project did not require, and we have not gone through the wetlands commission process, because, again, we're not proposing any regulated activity as part of this project. From a utility standpoint, there are underground utilities available in Victoria Drive. We're proposing underground utility services for electric, gas, water service. There's been adequate fire flow tests provided by Aquarian to ensure that there's adequate fire flow for the building. We have provided a proposed fire hydrant in front of the building in this location here. From a, and we are proposing or providing provisions for an emergency generator for, if there's any need for emergency power, in case there's an outage. We have designed our septic system to be located in the front corner of the property here, in front of and outside of the paved area for the operations. This area was tested and witnessed with Rich Jackson from the Health Department, and we're able to design the septic system in accordance with the Public Health Code and all applicable requirements. From a landscape standpoint, I do have Doug Rich with me, our landscape architect, who can, I guess, answer any questions the commission may have, but we have designed this to ensure that, you know, we're enhancing and expanding the existing extensive vegetated buffer towards the east of the property here. We have a series of understory trees, deciduous trees throughout the area, and we've also put a primary focus on providing additional plantings along the westerly property line, which essentially runs parallel with the Victoria Drive, or the, excuse me, the Swiss Army driveway off of Victoria Drive. So we've provided some extensive buffering and plantings through here, so that this whole operation really will be, will not be visible, based on the grades and the topography and the proposed plantings through here. We've provided a very robust planting plan, we feel, that can ensure that the perimeter of the property is adequately screened. We've actually added some additional landscaping along this southerly property line, which is one of the comments from, I believe, Will regarding some landscaping, so we've beefed up that area a little bit, provided additional plantings. And we also have some plantings in and around the detention basin as well. Now, from a site plan standpoint, I will say, so we provided calculations and demonstrated that we do meet the 10% interior landscaping requirement for the parking area, which is to the north of the proposed building here. There is a, this location here is a trailer storage area. We didn't really consider that a parking area, and also it doesn't have the 50 parking spaces that would be required to provide that interior landscaping requirement. But we do have, and we did provide landscaped end islands on either end of this, and we do have a landscaped island in the center, which essentially separates the trailer storage area and the trailer parking area, and the loadout silos operations here. We did provide some additional trees in that area to provide some additional planting, greenery, shade, et cetera. From a lighting standpoint, our lighting plan has been designed in accordance with the Monroe requirements. It features dark sky compliant fixtures, recessed fixtures, to ensure that there's no light pollution, they're not going to have any visible light sources. And we've demonstrated that the light levels are within the requirements, and they will not prevent any glare, they will not result in any glare or any other impact to any of the surrounding neighbors. From a traffic engineering standpoint, so as the commission is likely familiar, the property is covered under an O S T A major traffic generator certificate for the overall property. That dates back, actually, to 2006, when this was originally going to be an office development. It was then modified to add the Swiss Army corporate headquarters, and it was further modified as part of the Walmart project, which was going to be putting far more trips onto the network than this development. What we did is we updated our traffic study that was last done for Walmart, to actually understand what our potential traffic impacts would be. We analyzed the same five intersections that were studied as part of that previous study, the intersection of Purdy Hill and Route 25, or the intersection of Victoria Drive and Main Street, Tashua and Spring Hill, and then Route 25 and Route 111. From a D O T standpoint, the process, when you have an existing major traffic generator, is you go through what's called an administrative decision to modify that certificate. From a traffic operations standpoint, we look at, they look at, basically, that certificate gives us the ability to put so many trips on the network, and whatever offsite improvements are tied to those trips that we're proposing. So as part of the Walmart project, we had, we were putting quite a few trips on the network, and part of that, we were proposing roadway widening of Route 25, to provide two through lanes northbound and some additional widening at the intersection of Victoria Drive. How the D O T looks at this is, we do a trip generation comparison, and what's approved on the property are the only trips we can put on the network, and therefore, those are the only trips that are allowed per our D O T approval. The proposed manufacturing facility is estimated to generate a total of 50 trips in the morning, 39 entering, 11 leaving. During the PM peak hour, 18 trips entering, 32 trips leaving, for a total of 50 trips. And then during the Saturday peak hour, 10 trips coming in, 10 trips leaving, for a total of 20 trips. So when we compare that to what was approved as part of the Walmart approval, our modification actually represents a considerable reduction in number of trips on the network when compared to what we're proposing now. It actually represents 189 trip reduction in trips during the morning peak period, 512 trip reduction during the afternoon peak period, and 695 trip reduction during the Saturday peak period. So basically, by going from that approval to this approval, we're eliminating all of those trips from this facility and modifying our O S T A certificate accordingly. That being the case, our analysis indicates that the existing infrastructure along Route 25 is more than adequate to accommodate. The roadway widening that was approved as part of the Walmart project is being eliminated because it's no longer necessary, and the overall property is now essentially, all those trips are removed from the equation. So any other modifications to this site in the future will require to further modify that certificate, to require further analysis, et cetera. So in summary, from a D O T standpoint, we've submitted our A D to them, our revised traffic impact study that has been submitted to this commission, has been submitted to the L T A, and I know he's been reviewing it, but that's essentially where it stands from a D O T standpoint, from a traffic impact standpoint. With me, Gary Capitania was also here to discuss the architectural elevations. I can probably cover these quickly. We do provide, we did provide in the packet colored renderings of the proposed elevations. I do believe, earlier, maybe 5:30 this evening, you received a report from the Architecture Review Board. We had a meeting on Tuesday. They actually provided a positive referral, and one thing they did recommend or request was that, you can see here, so this is the west elevation of the facility, which faces Victoria Drive and Route 25. There are, you can see the storage silos, storage silos here, the loadout silos kind of run perpendicular to the building, and there is some mechanical equipment. This is part of the mechanical equipment that basically focuses on dust suppression and removing any of those, any of those, you know, dust or particulates in the air. Those all get removed as part of this process and done through there. We do have, so there's a series of dust collectors, cyclones, et cetera. They did request that we provide a... They did request that we provide a, that they, that those are shielded with a post-mounted metal panel, colored warm limestone. And the development team and the applicant has agreed to provide that, to provide some additional screening of those mechanicals. We do have, these are the two overhead doors for the loadout or the incoming raw material on the tipping floor. You can see the north elevation, so this would be looking from, from the north, looking south. You can see again, the, the storage silos and the loadout silos here. And we do have a positive referral from A R B. So, you know, I think we did receive comments from Will and Scott. I think I'd, I'd really be interested in hearing some of the comments and questions from the commission. And then, going from there.
Well, would you like to just run through, have you reviewed the staff comments?
I, I have, and we've been able to address many of them.
But you can just run through those quickly, it might answer a lot of the commission's questions.
Sure.
Double up on that.
So I'll, I'll start with Scott. From a technical standpoint, we can add incorporate the benchmark that was previously provided and established. That's no issue. Layout, loading the original subdivision, creation of the private roadway Victoria Drive was apparently established under the understanding of Walmart development, would essentially provide more public means for vehicular turnaround. It appears that this private site should, use should necessitate the provision of a roadway cul-de-sac. We're not proposing to establish a cul-de-sac as part of this. That subdivision was established as part of the subdivision approval process. There was, we can certainly rehash all of that because I think Victoria Drive was established as a private road before private roadways existed. We went through that process. We don't think a cul-de-sac is necessary because the, the roadway operations have essentially been the same since Swiss Army was constructed in two thousand and six. We don't see the need for that. If the commission feels strongly about it, we'd happy, we'd be happy to consider it. But from a, from an operations standpoint, you know, we think that the current configuration is adequate without the need to further modify property lines or go through a subdivision process. One comment that I do want to bring up, which is in their comments as well. There were a number of improvements required as part of the Walmart project related to the rail trail where it came across the property. And then there were also improvements as part of that subdivision approval, where Victoria Drive was, was formally established as a private, as a private street. Any and all improvements associated with the subdivision approval are still bonded for and required to be installed. So all of those improvements are still going, are still done, are going to be completed as part of that subdivision approval. That includes street lighting along Victoria Drive, sidewalks along Victoria Drive, and some street tree plantings along Victoria Drive. The improvements associated with the Walmart approval itself had to do with an improved and enhanced crossing for, crossing of Victoria Drive for the rail trail. Those improvements, you know, would be appropriate to be included as part of this application. And, and the applicant obviously certainly understands that and is willing to incorporate those into the, into the design drawings and the, and the proposed plans for this project itself. Back to Scott's comments for layout, the gravel access drive to the rear enclosed storage shed should include a truck turnaround area. So we provided, in this location here, we provided a gravel drive, really primarily to ensure that there was just some additional circulation around the building for fire service if necessary. We are proposing that to be gravel rather than paved, just to kind of reduce the total impervious area on the property. If Scott's, you know, we can certainly look at providing an area for, for turnaround. But we really see that as only for emergency vehicles, fire, if that situation ever arose. But we can certainly work with Scott to, to expand upon that to ensure there's adequate circulation for that area.
Kevin, so, so that's not a service door in the back?
It is, no, it's not intended for this to be a service door. There are egress doors back here. But it's not really a service door. You know, like you can see here, there's just an egress door here, which is really just for fire, you know, emergency egress. This is that storage building, but we're really not looking for that to be some sort of service or, or operation.
You have a.
There is, there is an overhead door.
Where that gravel road.
Yeah, there is, but it's not intended to be used for, for any kind of major, from an operations standpoint. If the commission feels strongly about that being paved, we could certainly talk to the, to the project team about it. But we didn't.
If you're not using it for that and it's just emergency, how about structural grass?
We could certainly look at something like that. I think the, you know, we're trying to minimize. We can look at that, we can look at that and.
Yeah, I mean, why can't it be less expensive? And, and function a whole lot better.
Sure. So dimensions should be included for the handicap sidewalk, we can certainly add that, that's not an issue. Parking spaces should be shifted and or the sidewalk layout should be revised to better align the walkway off the northwest corner of the shop warehouse office. I think we can, we can look at that. A lot of these, a lot of these kind of minor nuanced things, we can work with staff on. We'll get to the big ones though. Additional grades for the handicap sidewalk, we can address that. Grading northern end of the detention basin path should be revised to reduce the profile slope. I think we've actually made able to accommodate that already. Drainage utilities, test bit information provided for the detention basin, we have that from our previous applications. We can do that. We can adjust all the, kind of two through, two and three have to do with time of concentrations and predisturbance areas. We can accommodate all that, that's what we did as part of the Walmart project. We can incorporate that same, that same design intent here. Hydraulics should be included, the pipe run from the alley structure to the existing catch basin for seven Victoria Drive. We can, we can look at that. We can, we can really address all of his technical comments in relation to storm drainage, emergency spillway elevations, crest length for the.
What's, what's your net runoff from existing?
We're reducing, we're reducing in all storm conditions. So, and I, I, I think I said that we were attenuating for all storm events, but if I fail to, we are attenuating our. From former conditions. We're actually looking, we actually did our analysis based on how the site was before any approvals were granted in two thousand and three for an office development. So we actually looked at this for a pre-development condition rather than existing conditions. And all of our, and the system has been to runoff when compared to former conditions from a proposed standpoint. Really, that's kind of all of Scott's comments under D one through nine. Sedimentation erosion control, these are all minor things we can address, silt fencing, hay bales, inline protection, et cetera. Next, details, an elevation view of the stormwater storage tank should be provided. I failed to mention this. One of the things we did incorporate into this design, as we've seen in some other recent applications, there are, there's a desire to provide floor drains in facilities because when you're in an area that has, or when you're in an area that, that has septic systems, you're not allowed to provide any kind of floor drains into that system. So we've designed based on some anticipated operations really for cleaning and, and things like that. We did provide, we are proposing three underground storage tanks for floor drains and things like that. There's one small one to the north of the building here, one towards the rear of the building here, and one towards the south of the building here. Those are small underground storage tanks, we can provide additional details for that. Those tanks, similar to previous or recent, other recent applications, those tanks aren't going to be subjected to the D E P tank registration because any of the, because it's really only going to be used for wash water, things like that. So it doesn't have that requirement to be registered. But we can provide some additional documentation from D E P for, to that end as well.
And there's no proposed discharge for the tanks?
No, those are all, those are essentially, you know, almost like, there's no proposed discharge. Water goes in and it's pumped out as needed from an operations standpoint. Impervious barrier should be provided for the spillway fill section, we can certainly do that. That's something we've been incorporating a lot of basins lately. Access drive for the detention basin and rear gravel drive should be included, we can provide those additional details. Details of the double grate control structure, we can provide that as well. His comments under G, an approval should be contingent upon, number one, traffic improvements at the intersection of Victorian Drive and Main Street and along the subdivision frontage should be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. As I stated during our, our traffic discussion, as part of our process with the D O T, we're actually again, basically abandoning or giving up all those trips associated with the previous approval, thereby, thereby negating the need to do those improvements. We no longer have an impact that requires mitigation. So we are not proposing any of those improvements or widening to Route twenty-five.
In other words, are they going to issue a new certificate?
Yes, they'll be an administrative, they'll, they'll issue a new, the, the A D processes, they do, they, they modify and issue a new certificate. We have to, we have to submit as part of our A D submission a new O S T A certifiable area map, which actually breaks out all the uses on the property. It breaks out the number of parking spaces and the trips are adjusted accordingly. So there will be a new certificate issued that'll establish that and it'll, it'll reinforce that the offsite improvements are no longer required.
And something in there shows how the trucks are adequate to make the turnings and all that?
O S T A doesn't look at that, that's more of a private site development thing. I believe we've provided truck circulation templates as part of our plan and we can certainly add, provide some additional ones.
We're up on twenty-five? And at the dragways?
I don't know if we looked at twenty-five, but obviously we're focusing on our site today. I mean, the, the existing operations on twenty-five are there. And there's already heavy, heavy tractor trailers coming in and out, going to the.
Some problems, yeah. I think they have some problems.
Well, I know, I know Swiss Army has problems at their driveway itself. I know this driveway wasn't constructed the way that it probably should have been because when tractor trailers come through here, you can actually see a bunch of broken curb, things like that. That's obviously a Swiss Army related issue. I don't think that same situation exists at Victoria Drive and twenty-five.
But you can easily show that anyway.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly demonstrate that, provide those, those figures. There's other condition, the procurement of a revised floodplain permit. We can, we can do that as well. We, we issued and processed two floodplain permits as part of the previous application for Walmart. And that's not an issue. And actually, the only area that's really in question here is an area that was filled as part of a previous approval in two thousand and three, which was actually already done. I just, at the time, the floodplain permit requirements weren't really being followed. So Scott and I were actually able to address that as part of the Walmart project. We will, we will revisit that again as, as required for this application. From, going on to Will's comments, planning and zoning comments. Traffic impact analysis should be provided with trips, we did provide that. Analysis of the potential noise and dust impact should be provided addressing indoor processing, outdoor equipment operations and truck and loading, loading operations. We can certainly provide some additional detail on that, as I stated. Part of this operation is an extensive mechanical system. That includes a number of dust collectors, cyclones. So all, any of those dust particulates are actually collected, treated. They go into bag houses, which are essentially housings for any of those particulates. It all gets collected and handled and disposed of offsite. So we can provide some additional detail and narrative regarding that. Site access, the improvements, including but not limited to sidewalk lights, street trees, et cetera, have yet to be completed by the property. None of these improvements were part of the previous Walmart and subdivision. Again, as I stated, the subdivision improvements are still established with the subdivision requirements. And the, the only other, I think, improvement associated with the property as part of Walmart, which would be applicable to this, is really those improvements along the rail trail crossing here. We're certainly happy to incorporate that as part of this project. Another comment on the terminus of Victoria Drive with a cul-de-sac or a full hammerhead. So right now, Victoria Drive ends here, just past the bridge. Again, we don't think from an operations standpoint or that it really warrants a cul-de-sac. I think it would just kind of create additional impervious surface, which really isn't necessary based on the continued operation that's been out there since two thousand and two. But again, we're anxious to hear what the commission's thoughts and concerns are regarding.
And the background of that is, you know, when Walmart, this is part of the Walmart analysis.
Yeah.
There was a similar call for that at that time. And it was, analysis came down to the way the parking lot was designed, the way that it's pretty semi-public in a way, as opposed to this is really pretty much all private. It did, the commission at that time deemed that not so important because again, that flow and the constant travel of a, of a retail store. Here, you know, you have a kind of a dead end road that doesn't really have a, a way out without going into the individual private property. So that's sort of how the land use is changing. And I assume there's also land still left to be developed in that larger green space.
There is, there, there is, yeah. And, and part of this is there is an area on the site.
And there are other properties along Victoria Drive that, that have development potential. So, you know, and some of that is retail and then there could be people driving down and there's people going to the, to the soccer place. Again, the, the land use change is kind of saying maybe it needs to be something.
We can, we can look at that. I mean, just, you know, my, just thinking again, because we're, I always like to, probably shouldn't always open my mouth sometimes, but just thinking, you know, so I, I don't think we want to modify the subdivision and the property lines because of where this is, where the end, where the terminus of Victoria Drive is now and the proximity to the wetlands to provide something here. If we were to continue it and provide a turnaround on private property.
It makes more sense down there.
It, it does. My only concern is there are a number of underground electric telephone and cable vaults just to the north of Victoria Drive now. So trying to incorporate something like that would actually have, it could potentially have a considerable impact to those utilities, which I prefer to try to avoid.
You could take it one step to see more. But that's one you can look at.
I mean, we, again, I'm curious to hear what the commission thinks about that in terms of an operations standpoint. Again, we feel that based on what's out there and how long it's been out there, I don't think there's a lot of instances of, of people going down because they're, you know, just, you know, confused or don't know where they're going or they need that turnaround. But we can certainly discuss further.
Will there be a gate?
We are proposing gates.
So then they can drive in and turn around.
They can, yep, similar to how they do now.
There's going to be a sign, right?
Uh, there will be, some additional detail on that, that wasn't included right now, but we will include that in our modified, revised information after the hearing. Number four, the project narrative, yeah, we haven't, we didn't update, we made an initial submission. After that initial submission, there were a number of value engineering, there was a value engineering exercise that took place. So the building changed, the footprint changed, the layout changed a little bit. And the narrative needs to be updated. We'll provide an updated narrative, which actually is based on the current plan and it'll clear up some of the discrepancies between building square footages. And, and again, based on our, our current plan, as I stated, the project does include the, it does propose a sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one square foot facility. Zoning compliance table is a number of comments to revise our compliance table. We can address all of those. None of those are, are an issue. Number six, sheet two point one oh includes a calculation for outdoor storage. Again, the, the area that we are proposing for this is behind the building in this location here. It's really just kind of an area to store. You know, if they, if they, if parts are received for the proprietary operations inside or anything like that, they would be stored out here. We're proposing that the deferred parking spaces be located in front of that area so that if, if the deferred parking spaces ever had to be constructed, we could eliminate that storage. But we did provide that in the back here, so it is, it is screened by the building and, and then screened by the landscaping across. That wouldn't be something that would be visible. Areas for the proposed gravel drive. We actually, this actually has been revised to show this is all pavement to the north of the building. And Scott and I talked, we, we talked a little bit about this briefly. We can look at it, but I, I do believe, you know, gravel is probably an appropriate surface treatment here, but we can certainly take a look at, at grass pavers or something similar and we'll confirm that it is not necessarily, not needed from an operational standpoint. But we can, we can look at that and we'll provide a more comprehensive response. The above ground connections between the principal building and the accessory silos, as well as between silos. Again, those are actually all pneumatically filled. So that detail, I believe, is on the architectural plans. We could certainly provide that additional detail for the, for the commission and staff. The architectural elevation should be expanded to include additional details, how they comply. We feel that the building does comply and Gary Capitania can certainly expand upon that if the commission has specific questions or comments regarding the elevations. And I believe the, the plans actually have been revised that have some of that detail called out.
Well, yeah, he also thought that you would enumerate that so that compares to the.
Certainly. Full extent of the equipment proposed in front of the building should be shown on the elevations, which we did incorporate. Provided a detail to demonstrate the proposed coloring materials intended to be used. We've, we've added that information. And again, as part of one of the recommendations from A R B, we will provide an additional screen in front of that. we will provide an additional screen in front of that. Proposed wall light should be shown and labeled on the architectural elevations. I think we've incorporated that, and those were incorporated into our lighting photometric plan as well. Uh, the deferred parking, um, we can provide the additional information requested in terms of, uh, why, and we can provide additional information in terms of the, the operations from a anticipated employee standpoint. The, the parking requirement, just based on the uses, is what's dictating all that parking. We feel that we'd probably be comfortable with, you know, twenty to thirty spaces. But, uh, uh, we can certainly provide some additional detail to satisfy that, that comment. General accessory components, no facility identification signs appear to be proposed. We'll provide that as part of our next submission. Construction detail for the underground scale, we'll provide that as well. Sidewalk widths, labeling, we can do that. Revised handicap accessible spaces, we can do that as well. The note to sheets two one one, two one, and two five one, we can certainly do that again. All of the operations for this facility are proposed completely within doors, um, so we aren't proposing any, any material processing or anything outside of the, of the facility. Landscaping, um, we, you know, um, as always, Will's, Will is providing some recommendations to enhance the landscaping plan. We feel that given the use, what we're proposing is, is appropriate, given the industrial nature of the property, the industrial nature of the area, um, we do have, we feel, a pretty robust landscape plan. When you look at, um, similar facilities, um, we can, uh, you know, again, one of his comments having to do with the internal landscaping, again, per the zoning, it says if your parking lot over fifty spaces, you have to provide ten percent interior landscaping. We've done that to the parking lot, um, to the north of the building. Again, this is only twenty spaces for kind of trailer storage, um, and we did provide landscaped end islands and some additional trees through that landscaped island in between the, the building itself and, and the operation, so, um, we feel we, we've met the intent of the regulation. The shrub and ground cover plantings, I think we've done in, in some areas of the berm to the basin, et cetera. The stabilized path to the basin, it's, it's intended to be established so that it can be something used for maintenance in the future, so we can provide some additional details for that. Shrubs and ground cover planting should be provided under the trees throughout the island proposed. Given the industrial use of the property, we're not, we're not proposing to create this to be a, it's not a C V S. While we think that a lot of the, the, those additional landscape treatments are appropriate when you have a property that's, that's, that's visible, that's visited by the public, it's, it's up front and center on the road. This property is over fifteen hundred feet back from, from Route 25. It's, it's an industrial operation, and, and we feel what we've proposed is, is sufficient and does comply with, uh, with the regulations. We've, uh, two isolated parking spaces at the northwest corner of the building should be eliminated and located elsewhere. You know, we're, we're proposing two spaces just here, just basically right in front of the office, because we think that's an appropriate place to put those additional parking spaces. We are proposing to try to, to maintain those. Northern parking area should be shifted to the north to provide wider depth planting bed. We did provide some, uh, landscaping through here, but we're not, again, this is an industrial operation with industrial use. We're not proposing to create a, this isn't something that's gonna be visited by the public. We feel that what we've provided and proposed is, is adequate, given the use. And we're also trying to minimize our overall limited disturbance, so we don't want to kind of add additional area and more disturbance and, and, and work on the property than is necessary. The condenser and the generator and the small traffic control iron, uh, island, we shifted that. We made that adjustment per, per Will's, uh, request. Additional trees should be provided in the outer length. Additional trees should be provided in the closer interval northern edge. Additional trees should be provided around the outer edge. We did provide some along the southern edge, but again, we feel that, you know, the, the site is currently surrounded by an extensive landscape buffer, which has been established since 2003. And you can see it, you know, as part of the, the, going back multiple approvals, you know, extensive landscape buffers were established around the residential areas. We're expanding upon it in this, in this corner here. But the, the property owner even went as far as planting trees in individual property owners' yards to ensure that there was adequate buffer and screening. And I think if, if you go out there today, you can see how robust and, and thick this vegetation is. It's funny, you can kind of see it here, there's another aerial that's even better. You know, you want to see a, a robust buffer and how it compares to some other things that may have been installed. Just look here, look at, you know, look at the trees and the vegetation here compared to the soldier course, trees that were installed as part of the Swiss Army. You know, I think we've, we've demonstrated and we've established, you can see that robust growth. You can see that extensive buffer, and again, we're actually expanding upon that in this location here, so. We feel what we've proposed is adequate and meets the intent of the regulations. And then, uh, we had a spelling error on some of the sheets.
Kevin, your picture here is showing a lot of green up in that northwest corner. Are you intent to actually finally topsoil and seed that?
We, we are proposing to topsoil and seed the entire area. We, we, we aren't looking to, to do that at this time. I think we talked about possibly, we talked about kind of scarifying and seeding it with a, with, uh, a newland conservation wildlife mix. So we did provide that to provide some seeding, and we think that can, can grow and thrive in the current soil conditions. But we aren't proposing to, to install topsoil in the entire area, we're proposing to seed it.
I got a question for you.
Sure.
When we originally talked, we had talked about how you were gonna do this work and you weren't gonna be involved with wetlands. And looking at your plan here, and I see fork in the wetlands, in the regulated area. And it occurred to me, you know, initially we had our conversation, we didn't talk about it. It's occurring to me now that part of the Walmart proposal was remediation in the wetlands. There was an area where you were doing some grading over here, extensive grading over here. Remember that? It's part of the wetlands, that there's a, there was a floodplain area that was encroached upon.
That was, so part of, that was actually part of our propos, our proposed parking lot.
Well, part of your proposal for Walmart was to remediate wetlands and to plant a buffer.
No, it, it.
Now, I got a suggestion, because I know you're worried that, that it's gonna send it back to P and Z, and that's not my goal, uh, in the wetlands, and that's not my goal either. I don't, I'm not here to put a monkey at a ranch in the whole thing, but suggestion maybe? Uh, because that area, the whole area over here needs to be restored. And I don't, as you said, it, it, most of it is not hard to restore, uh, especially if it's gonna be, you know, meadow kind of thing. But the, some of the buffer plantings and remediation plantings, um, what about offering to do that as a separate remediation proposal to the in the wetlands commission? And establish a, a limit of disturbance line that runs, go back to your colored.
So, I, I just, this is better to show where an actual disturbance is, but, because the rendering shows all that green everywhere, and we're not proposing to do any work over there, but I'm with you.
But this is one piece of property, and it's all disturbed. Okay, so you do have a violation on this property.
I don't think we do. The, the work that we were proposing for mitigation over here was because, as part of our parking lot construction, we were replacing fill-in the floodplain, and we were providing compensatory storage in this area to offset for that work.
All right, well, we'll have to, I'll have to take a.
We can look at it, yeah, yeah.
But I, and I'm trying to recall, so, but what I'm thinking is, maybe you could establish a, um, a line here that is your, um, limit of disturbance, and then that would go with this development. And if you agree to treat the rest of this as a, um, remediation's not the right word, a restoration, then for these areas that may encroach a little bit on these upper review areas, you could, um, you know, you could address those at that time. I'm thinking, you know what you did for, um, what's the sports?
Kevin, you have two point one oh.
Yep.
Oh, totally. The, the, uh, sports, remember you post, you had, you posted a bond for the second phase, which was to come back and do the remediation? I'm wondering if you could maybe look at or consider something like that for this so that you would come in within the next couple of months as a separate issue, then you wouldn't get bogged down.
So Scott, so they, they've already delineated the limit of disturbance on this set. So is that what you're looking for?
Well, it's bigger than that right now. It's all their plantings.
No, I'm talking about what their, the limit of disturbance for this building, they've shown on the ground.
Well, that's the limit, I mean, always to build this building, but what I'm saying is, the building is not a property.
Right, I understand, but you were saying, but you were suggesting that he identify a limit of disturbance line.
Yep, but I think they could stick, they could stick to that limit of disturbance. And what I'm suggesting is in lieu of getting, opening up a big can of worms and saying, oh, this has to go back to wetlands, why not treat it like a separate, um, issue? And if they're agreeable to posting a bond and saying, okay, we'll post a bond with the understanding that we'll come in within X period of time to, to restore the rest of the property, then we can treat them separately, and they don't have to get involved with wetlands for this one.
I mean, I, I'd certainly like, I'd, I'd like an opportunity for us to kind of review the past approvals to really understand what was tied to it.
Yeah, because I'm not real sure exactly where your limits were up in there either.
Yeah.
Maybe they weren't, and if they're not into the wetland area, then it's clearly just a planning and zoning, you know, as you were gonna, you were proposing.
Right.
And I'm not sure, you know, you, you showed it quickly on your colored plan, and I think, I don't think that was based on anything. I mean, I think you just.
We like to make a nice, pretty picture sometimes.
Yeah, someone colored it in, and it, and I don't know whether it, it actually does extend into this area, maybe it doesn't.
I think it just follows the tree line.
Yeah, and so, yeah, we can take a look at that, you, you're not finishing up tonight.
Yeah, well, we can certainly work, work offline. I, I don't want to commit to anything, or, but I'll have to discuss it with the applicant team and Scott to work through.
I'm just suggesting we can maybe come up with a creative way.
Your attention is to stabilize that undeveloped part of the property.
Yes.
You know, I don't know if there are other limit lines, but that limit line obviously was less than.
Yeah, I, I think.
It's the primary building area, it's not the.
Right, it's, it's really the, it was kind of based on where the physical land disturbance is. Not necessarily plant installations, but we can certainly work on refining that.
Like, I'm not sure, but I think that part of that area up in here, I think you have to flatten out that slope. I think that's, isn't that steeper than two to one?
No, we're, we're maintaining what's, what's there, we're just proposing that a little bit of grading outside the.
No, I know you're proposing that, but for restoration of this, as opposed to just scarifying and putting some grass seed down, I think the slope over here needs to be, uh, beefed out because it, it's, it's been cut into and it's steeper than two to one. It needs to be, you know, you need to lose some fill material. But I'm, I'm off, I'm suggesting maybe we can talk about it as a separate thing, so you can come up with.
We can certainly talk through that. I think that's staff comments, I have it here with the commission, they have to think of the project.
Ryan?
Uh, no questions really, just, uh, you meant, I guess you kind of breezed over the, the dust suppression, which seems good, we didn't really mention noise, uh, has the noise studied and known or?
So, so there has been some noise analysis conducted, and there are some, uh, noise attenuation measures being designed into the building itself. Um, we can probably provide some additional details to that in the, in the revised plan set that, that come in. And obviously, this, this application is, from a noise standpoint, the Monroe zoning regulations are very specific and, and strict, far more restricted than what the current, the state D E P standards are. But there are levels established for, um, noise at residential property lines, so there has been some analysis done for that, and we're, this project obviously has to meet all those applicable requirements from a noise standing, a noise standpoint.
All right, and then I would just want to express the, uh, the gravel driveway to the overhead door. That's not gonna be used, just finding out where it fell on that door.
Absolutely. That's it.
More statements.
Ken? Is this a twenty-four hour operation?
We, we are requesting the ability to possibly operate for, for twenty-four hour duration.
Okay, so the noise, getting back to the noise thing, that's not gonna impede on anybody's sleep or anything, right?
Absolutely not, the noise regulations establish different decibel levels which have to be met during, I think it's seven P or ten P M to seven A M, so, so any and all operation on the facility would have to comply with that requirement. But we are requesting the, the ability to operate for, you know, to have that ability, no, no restrictions on hours of operation.
Just to confirm, you are still subject to any noise regulations that the town in general has, and you have to abide by that?
Of course, we have to comply with the regulations, absolutely.
And are you, and you're not proposing any work besides some remediation in the, what is that, the north? The northwest part of the property and the northeast part of property, where the wetlands are?
We aren't proposing any activity there, this essentially really shows the limit of grading and, and disturbance on the property, so. Other than maybe some, some plantings which actually don't even extend that far, you can kind of see, um, we aren't proposing any activity there, other than our landscape plan does show seeding in that area.
You know the area? So that gray area up in the wetland there, is that, that, is that the wetland up where you were, the light green?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's where you're storing all that?
Yeah, so that plan does show, like, you know.
It's, it's an existing condition that was done as part of a wetland approval, so there is an approval for that. And that work has been completed in accordance with.
Well, no, we should leave it that way, right?
Wait, 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 what, what?
The wetland approval from two thousand and six, when three hundred thousand square feet of office was approved in this area, which actually started the activity.
So was that work, that work wasn't finished, though?
We can certainly look at it. And, and, yeah, we can, we can look at that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's time to do that.
And then, did you have time to review the Monroe Conservation Water Resources Commission's, uh, recommendation?
We were not provided those, so I don't know what they said.
Uh, it's dated August second, uh, it just speaks about stormwater issues, uh, which you already spoke to today. You're, uh, it's supposed to reduce from the prior conditions of the property, is that correct?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Kev, a couple of questions. So if you go twenty-four hours, I understand about the, the noise decibels have to come down at, at nighttime. Are trucks coming in and out of there as they were operating during the day? Such as, like, are they gonna load, unload, all that kind of stuff coming from different sites? Or however they receive and distribute their materials, are they coming at night as well?
No, the, the operations, whether it's incoming or outgoing materials, um, is only gonna happen during the day. Uh, a possible third shift for twenty-four operation, operations would really, would really only be processing inside the building.
So they're working inside?
So they're only working inside, correct?
So they're not opening up the big garage doors, and they're not?
No, there'd be, there'd be no, uh, deliveries or anything at that hour of day.
Okay, so they're basically coming, parking their cars, going inside.
And staying inside.
And staying inside.
Correct.
Thank you. Then, I guess you're gonna get us the information about the sign, because talking about this cul-de-sac and turning around and all that kind of stuff, so I guess some information about signage would be, would be helpful since you're not having a gate or, or stuff like that. The two silos in the driveway.
Yes.
So now you, you, you go on the scale, you unload, and say you're gonna load up underneath those two silos, right?
Mm-hmm.
What is underneath those two silos if something spills on those silos?
Well, those, the, the whole, the whole relationship between the tanker and the silo and the assembly for that connection in between the, the silo itself and the oper, and the, and the tanker is all very much designed and controlled to prevent that type of situation from happening. So, so it's, it's, it specifically measures how much material is discharged, et cetera, so that there's a number of controls in place. The area underneath it is paved, and essentially what this product is, is like a very fine sand. So even if.
So if it spills on the ground?
It can be swept up and, and picked up and.
With a shovel and move on.
Exactly.
It's not, there's no, it can't contaminate anything, it can't?
Nope, and there are a number of, and, and even if it, you know, it can be swept up, and it can be picked up, and it can be collected and, and containerized and, and dealt with that way.
Do we have some kind of information saying that it will not be able to contaminate anything? God forbid something happens?
Sure, we can, we can certainly provide that. Essentially, what this really does is it just ends up with a very fine sand. Um, but that's, that's the finished product that would be coming out of that.
But just if we had something made just in case, you know, you never know.
Yeah. The, um, so, so essentially what that material would be, let's say if there was a spill and it wasn't picked up immediately, from a stormwater standpoint, that would be collected with any other sand that's in the parking lot from a suspended. that would be collected with any other sand that's in the parking lot from a suspended solid standpoint.
Okay, I'm, just my concern was if, if it does spill, I mean, stuff happens, right? You could have a malfunction in a machine, you could, whatever, it could overflow, hits the ground, I just want to make sure it doesn't, it doesn't affect anything. If it's not, if it's not attended too quickly.
O- o- of course, so I was just going to talk about the additional measures that are built into the, the site design. So like, again, if it was, if there was, essentially would be is a big pile of fine sand on the ground, right? So if it rained, like, it'd be carried in the stormwater standpoint and it would go through that same treatment train where it would go through catch basins with two-foot sumps which would collect a lot of that material. It would then be going through a hydrodynamic separator which would remove the, the, the sand itself which would be collected in that treatment measure and that, and that.
And taken out.
And then, and then it, then it could be handled that way. And even if it did go into the detention basin, again, the detention basin has been designed to actually attenuate the flows. So that material could actually be, would essentially almost act as a sediment basin until you hit the, the outlet elevations. So there, there's a number of protection measures to do that, but we can certainly provide a narrative to that and talk a little bit more about the equipment itself and the, and the measures, mechanical measures built in to prevent that.
Awesome, thank you so much, Kev.
Kevin, do you know if the, if the transfer from the silo into the trailer is coupled connection or is it just dumped in free?
I believe it's a coupled connection, but I can, I'll, I'll confirm that and, and discuss that, I don't, I don't believe it, it's not a, it's not a, it's not like you're dumping out of a faucet and it's getting collected in the thing, I'm pretty sure it's a coupled connection, but I'll provide that information.
It's not coming through the hatch to the top, that's how it's going in? The hatch, it's a bulk tanker, right? So they got to open a hatch, you got to get somebody up there to open it, put the chute in so it all goes down that way, right?
Yes.
Because you're not going to.
Like an oil truck.
Yeah, it, it, that's what it is, it's essentially what it's like, yeah.
You're not going to bottom. You're not going to bottom feed the tanker.
No, no, the, all the tankers are, are led, are fed from the silos from above, the silos themselves are dramatically fed. But yeah, we can provide that information, detail about that connection point.
Okay, so, so let me, I just want to understand, so breathing, any of this dust is not going to have any health effects on anything?
So. The, the system is designed, the whole, the whole operation.
I know, I'm just saying that like, what he's talking about still, and if it's on the ground, if it's a windy day, the dust has no health effects on, on anything.
It's, it's, it's.
I'm just saying, do you have literature on that or?
Not off the top of my head, I'd have to, I'm sure there's literature available, I don't believe so. I, I will say this.
I understand his concern and that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
He's more concerned about like an airborne thing.
Right, yeah, I, I understand that, I, I can sort of look at that, I know that, that, one of the other components of this site, of this project is actually because of the operations, this project will actually also get a, um, an air permit from the DEP.
No, 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 I have that, I just want to know about the health effects.
I, I can look into that, I don't, yeah.
And then, um, any chemicals being stored in this property?
No.
All right, and the storage tanks are going to be alarmed?
Yes.
And then, on the truck traffic, you got to set a time for truck traffic?
Um, we can, um, essentially what, how this is going to operate is, a lot of the, the raw material actually comes in on bar, on barges from New Jersey and then gets brought right up from Bridgeport, um, the, the outgoing of finished product kind of happens based on.
I, I understand what's going on inside the building, you're going to have all that stuff I'm talking about like that night. People that live in the, in the neighborhood that, you know, you have tractor-trailer trucks coming in at twelve.
No, you said there's not, that's not happening?
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have that, but we can, we can, what I'll do is I'll, I'll come back and offer some, some restrictive times on, no truck traffic past a certain hour.
I think when you do your analysis relative to the noise and dust, the number two comment, you can build that up.
Sure.
You said third shift, you said third shift, right, was coming in just to work?
Just processing, just working inside the facility.
So the last truck would have to come in sometime during the second shift?
Yeah, mostly, yeah.
Right, so second shift ends at. Right, so second shift ends at seven PM and that would.
We can provide that information, we'll do that as part of our response to this.
I have a few questions, um, can you show us the remainder of the prop, overall property that can still be developed? Of that entire Victoria Drive?
Sure.
Just for clarification, what else can be developed there?
Um, so, so on ten Victoria itself, which is the subject property, um, we're developing roughly half of it. There's probably, uh, you know, maybe ten or so acres, but a lot of that's wet and undevelopable. So there's maybe six acres or so of developable area adjacent to the positive facility. And then, going towards Victoria Drive, um, to Victoria Drive, which is this parcel here, there's a, there's somewhat of a small developable area here and a developable area up front along Victoria Drive and Route twenty-five. This was previously approved for a daycare center way back when and this was at one point approved. The front corner was one point approved for a pharmacy, I believe, like a thirteen thousand square foot pharmacy. But I believe both those approvals have lapsed, anything that happens on, on the front piece would obviously be subject to a wetlands application and planning and zoning application.
But the, the, the subject property actually itself has, can be.
It does have some.
Subdivide, or that would be, it's one, that's one property, right?
It is, well, all one par, parcel, yes, it's about twenty-five, uh, or so acres.
But you could basically put another building on that.
It, yes, there, there's, there's area that, that's essentially reserved for expansion or another possible future development. But any, any of those activities would have to come back before the commission.
Okay.
And, they didn't finish going around about, but the, uh, the shade properties are also, some of they can be developed. And Swiss Army has that big grass lawn there that could basically be the same size building that they have.
Okay.
I think always soccer is somewhat, and I guess you could put it, put it in a fielded, but.
I don't think so, floodplain requirements, I think you're, you're, you're really restricted on what you can do there.
Okay, the, the deferred parking that you mentioned, that's, uh, something that would be based on, on, i- it's there available? The space is available for parking in the future, is that intact?
Yes, that, and that's what the regulations allow, is, is as long as, you can defer parking as long as you can demonstrate that it can be constructed in the future. Um, and it's based on its demand if, if it's ever needed.
And there's no, uh, retail component to this building, it's all manufacturing, there's no, there's no customers coming to the property.
No, no.
Uh, you might have a, you know, salesman or something or.
Right, yeah, there's no other, it's not a, it's not a wholesale operation, it's, yeah, there's no customers coming in and out or anything.
There are retail customers that go to the Swiss Army?
Right, but not, not to this, not for this property. Um, and, and as far as waste from the manufacturing process, how is that handled or what, what is the waste?
There, well, there's, there's, there's two trash compactors here, um, just to the north of the, the entrances to the tipping floor. Um, any and all waste product that comes out of the manufacturing facility goes directly to these, there's actually some information, or there's some detail shown on the elevations. You can see there's actually, you can kind of see there's a, it's called a cyclone above these compactors which actually discharges directly into those for any particulates that are collected or any waste, things like that, that goes directly into those compactors.
And what is that waste?
Uh, uh, um, coming off the, the raw material, there could be some organics or things like that that's on that, that's on the glass that's, that comes off as part of the processing.
Aren't there some recyclable materials that also come off there?
Uh, there are, and, and a lot of that kind of, from an operation standpoint, some of it's proprietary, so I can't get into it too much, but yes, there is some.
No, but they're, they're taking it off, they're collecting and then it has a market.
E- exactly, yeah, and, and this whole, this whole operation is, is a very green recycling, you know, that, that type of operation, so, yeah, whatever can be salvaged is.
And the silos, as far as the size and the height and everything, I'm sure they, they comply with regulations, are, are they like maxed out?
They're, they're actually not, I think the silos measure fifty-six and I think the regulations allow for sixty.
Are you counting the things up above it?
Um, I believe we're counting all the appearances, but all those details are shown. But we're definitely within the allowable.
Yeah, I think.
And the, the dust collector that you mentioned, um, that, that's all internal to the building?
There are, there is some mechanical equipment outside, there's a bag house which essentially kind of takes it in, in.
But it's controlling what's happening indoors, not anything that's happening outdoors?
Correct, it's all part of the internal ventilation and HVAC system.
Okay, my last.
Why, why are those outside?
Uh, it's just from an operation standpoint, how it's, how to lay out the operations, how to maximize space, how to utilize the space. It's kind of a form of the, of the.
Typically they are.
Right, yeah, most mechanical systems are outside.
Are those the ones that they, they're recommending be screened?
Yes.
And my last question was regarding the, uh, the cul-de-sac, I, I don't, personally I don't believe one is necessary, but I think maybe there could, you know, something could be done to make it easier for someone that, you know, happens to go down, down the road there and realizes that they need to turn around. Uh, because otherwise, if you go, if you go to the site plan, uh, I guess, if someone were to go down, they would have to, I, I don't know where they would go, they would turn past the, the tanker trucks there and loop around? Or, or into the parking space, I guess? A U-turn, they would have to, a U-turn.
Right where it opens up into the parking area, right there.
Oh, just move around right there, you're saying?
Yeah.
That, that's wide enough to, to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So you said stuff's coming in from New Jersey on barges to Bridgeport, that makes me nervous. What's the stuff that's coming in?
The, the raw material that gets processed.
What is that, what is?
Glass, glass.
Broken glasses?
Huh?
Broken bottles or?
Yeah, uh, there's a couple of different glass streams that can come in, um, but it's essentially, it's, it's, it's glass that's, that's being diverted from landfills and, and processed here to produce positive product.
Does it have to be clean or?
It, yeah, it, it comes in and, and, and based on, it goes through a process, but it's, it's generally clean based on the type of material that comes in.
But it's not contaminated material?
No, absolutely not.
How are they assured, how are you assured of that?
I think that part, that's part of the whole bill of laden of the material itself, so before it gets sourced, before it comes here, they're not going to take it from, I couldn't, I couldn't fill up my recycle bin with glass bottles and bring it to the facility to be processed. It's, it's a different process in terms of how the material's sourced, what's brought, you know, it's all part of that, that, you know, it all has to be, um, you know, it, it goes through that processing so that they ensure that what they bring in is the right material that can actually go back into the, the manufacturing process.
Watching that process?
The operators, yeah, urban mining northeast is the applicant is going to be the operator of the facility.
There's, all right, so then it's up to them?
Yes.
To make sure what they're bringing in is clean, not contaminated?
That, that's correct.
Does the state regulate that?
Um, no, it doesn't, uh, well, there, there's regulation process, but there's a number of state permits. Um, this is actually getting processed through a BUD permit, so that it's a beneficial use determination. So it's not like a landfill that has a different regulatory process. This operation is actually a beneficial use as established by DEP, so there's a process for that. So yes, there is a, the DEP is actively involved in this project, they're involved in the air permitting side, they've been involved. There's already a stormwater general permit on the property, that there, there, there will be an industrial, uh, permit for stormwater discharge on this property. So the, the DEP is actively engaged and actually very excited about this project because it really is, uh, it really is going to be a pilot in the largest facility of this type, um, in the country.
So they, they make sure that the product's not contaminated?
Well, there, there's, it's truly the operators, the operators don't want to take in contaminated materials, then they're on the hook.
Well, I mean, we're just considered by the sound of the rock.
Yeah.
Who oversees that, just the operator does or does the state have any involvement?
The, the, there's, there's a, there's a DEP relationship, um, I can maybe do a little bit more research. I don't believe that there's, that the DEP isn't overseeing the operations. The operators are responsible to operate within the confines of their various permits that they have and they're ultimately responsible for what comes in and what goes out.
Kevin, can you try maybe narrating, summarize those permits? And whatever recording or record keeping that has to be done relative to that and whether there's any inspections by the state? Is this overlay, over, new way?
I can, um.
We had the same question with another proposal where they were bringing in material to reprocess. And I had wondered about it then too, that there's a bill of.
Well, um, so, so the, the DEP permits that are required as part of this process are, it's not considered like a transfer station like that some, uh, landfills or things like that have, because it has a beneficial use determination, it doesn't go through that same regulatory process. But there are, there is a, uh, from a construction standpoint, there's a stormwater general permit for construction activities that basically it, it, it ensures that during construction, there's not, um, sediment getting off the property into water, uh, you know, waterways or any sensitive areas, there are inspections required after every storm event that generates up to a tenth of an inch of rain and, and weekly inspections, um, there's an exhaustive reporting requirement associated with that. Once, that's during construction, once the, and, um, once the facility, facility is operational, the project and application has been made to the DEP for an air permit, which talks about, um, which basically regulates the particulate emissions from the property and the, what's required from a, from a, a particulate removal standpoint from the air and that's regulated and there are additional testing requirements and monitoring requirements that are established and required to do is from an operation standpoint. Additionally, there's also, it'll have a, a permit for stormwater discharge for an industrial facility, which is, which is also required as part of DEP. And as part of the DEP requirement for that, there are additional inspections and reporting required for just the ongoing operation of the facility from a stormwater standpoint. So, so there is additional operational reporting requirements from both the air permit and the industrial permit required as part of this process that the DEP is involved in.
I just looked on the website for positive, it's quite an operation and it's quite eco-friendly as far as what I could read.
It is.
So for every Portland bag of Portland cement, a ton of it, you're posting out CO2, a ton of CO2 and for every ton of positive, you're, you're eliminating that. And then they're saying like eleven, twelve million tons of glass going to landfills. So what they're doing here is eliminating the landfills growing. So it's a pretty good, it's got a, they're quite a website, you got to go look at it, it's pretty neat.
It really is and it, and it's actually an improvement upon, you know, a lot of the times fly ash is what's used in the cement. This is an alternative to fly ash.
What is fly ash?
Fly ash is, and I have some.
From the coal, from the powder plants.
Fly ash actually comes, yeah.
It's nasty.
It's very nasty. All right, um, so the most commonly used pozilin, which is what this is an alternative for, is fly ash. Fly ash is the residue from burning coal to generate electricity. Approximately fifteen million tons of fly ash and other cementitious materials, um, are used in the US annually which is, which is delivered in trucks from remote locations, that goes into generating Portland cement and concrete. So what this facility does is it eliminates the need for that or significantly reduces the need for that by, by basically diverting glass from landfill just exactly as you said, bringing it here. And to your point, from a CO2 reduction emission standpoint, the manufacture of cement generates one ton of carbon dioxide per ton of cement, just like you said. Positive can replace up to forty percent of the cement and concrete, significantly reducing the carbon footprint when compared to fly ash which can replace only about twenty percent, and fly ash is from burning coal. So if you take this, you can take this clean process, divert waste from a landfill, bring it into here, run it through this proprietary process and generate that same material. It has better tensile strength, it is better, it is more flexural strength, outstanding compressive strength. Um, it's, it's resistance to chloride penetration and sulfate attacks, a lot of the times you have concretes that wear when they continuously put salt on the roads and things like that. This material actually defends against that better than the standard constituents that go into concrete. Um, excellent freeze thaw, freeze thaw resistance, um, uh, no early strength degradation that fly ash causes so it can be used in cold conditions which, which is a benefit.
Does this go into the two minutes concrete?
It goes into, it, it goes into, uh, por.
Concrete.
Concrete, yeah.
Cement, concrete.
Not the two minutes.
Not the two minutes.
And then the other thing, it's also a consistent, um, chemical composition and particle size distribution once it goes through this process. So there's, there's, you know, when you have some of these other materials that go into con, to, to concrete and to cement, if there's variations in particle size, it affects the strength, et cetera. So this is a, it's a, it's a far superior product than what's currently used, it's far better for the environment and it really is something that the town should be proud of because it, it, it really will, and that's why the state is so excited about it because there really is beneficial use for this material.
Is this process happening anywhere else?
Not at this scale, the urban mining is currently operating a very small scale facility in New York. Um, that's, that's only kind of a portion of what this facility is going to do. So this really is, it's gonna be, um, I'm really excited to actually see it get built because it really is one of those facilities that people can point to and say, this is, this is truly, you know, it's beneficial on so many, so many levels.
So will there, there won't be any smoke stacks?
There, there are, there are smoke stacks, they are shown on the elevations. Um, and again, that, part of that is tied into the, uh, air permit with the. um, and again, that, part of that is tied into the, uh, air permit with the E P, so the precise location of that, the height of that, the, um, you can see it, uh, here, the height of that, you know, the, the, the emissions from that are, are, uh, all part of that permit and regulated.
And ventilations, where the vent, where the building is ventilated?
Yeah, so, so that's all part of that air handling system that runs through the cyclones and the baghouses, so all that kind of comes through that system and is, and is, is processed and collected through this, through all these mechanical, uh, mechanical systems.
On that smoke stack, I didn't catch that when I was reading the plans, probably no issue, but we do have some height standards for on the roof and stuff, so let's make sure we double check that.
We do, yeah, actually, it's, it's interesting, smoke stacks are, it's the same type of thing of like flagpoles and church bars and things like that, it's actually.
It has still a limit, doesn't it?
It, it, it is, and it's actually, it's limited based on the building height, so it, it has been incorporated into the design, but we can provide that notation, so it's clear.
Okay.
That's it? All right, we already talked about the turnaround, um.
What are your thoughts on the turnaround, Commissioner, Chairman Porter?
At, at first I, I saw the need for one, only because, like we expressed earlier, when this was proposed to be a Walmart, if someone came down the road, pulled into the Walmart parking lot and looped around, they'd go right back out, this is a little bit different, you're coming down the road and the road is pretty much running directly into an industrial complex, but I, I believe there's enough area right inside the driveway for someone to do a U-turn if they come down the street and error. I'd, I'd like you just demonstrate to us, you know, with the turning radius, that, you know, far or.
That's an interesting, um, point that, you know, uh, on paper it looks a little different, but in, when, when someone drives down this road, I'm thinking that, uh, along the lines of what you're saying, Bill, if, if you look at this, the, they're coming down the road here and they're turn, you know, if you were to either line stripe or mark it out with a pave, different type of pavement to, to like, uh, concrete type thing, that you could actually mark out what looks like a cul-de-sac to the driver, and they're not going to know whether they're on the private road or the private driveway.
Mm-hmm.
So the end of, all they're going to know is at the end of this thing is a place for them to turn, turn around, so, yeah, he's right, you might be able to do that right on the, uh, beginning of their parking lot.
Um, you said that the trailer crossing is going to be incorporated into this?
Yes, we, we can incorporate that, and that went through extensive design and.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah, exhausted.
So you can just take that.
Put it right out.
Right in here.
Yeah.
Your proposed trailer storage area, you know, typically in, in a trailer storage location, you have a concrete pad for the landing gear, um, you might want to consider that because if you keep dropping trailers here, you know what's going to happen to the pavement.
Mm-hmm, we can look at that, thank you for that suggestion.
Um, hours of operation, you said you'll, uh, you'll provide something, and, uh, proposed, what's the expected, um, output capacity of this facility?
This facility is being designed to, to do a hundred thousand tons a year of this positive material, and, and it's built in some expansion capacity to kind of go up to a hundred and twenty thousand tons a year.
And then this is, this is minutia, but what's P C on the planting?
Pair. Pair?
Right, right when you're coming into the driveway, on the right-hand side, there's a street designated P C, and I don't know what that is.
Uh, well, it looks like it's not on our plan list, but I believe it's a pair, we'll update that. It's a pair. With par.
Lighting, you said it's all down lighting and.
Yes.
Comply with your spillage requirements?
Correct.
That's all the questions I have right at this moment. Staff have any additional comments before we?
Just that there is a eighty thousand dollar bond recommended at this point, and there's some changes to be made, so I'll adjust it.
I believe there was a bit of a discrepancy in bond amounts, um, the applicant thought about the eighty one thousand dollar bond.
Um, I, I haven't had a chance to kind of go through Scott's bond number yet, but I'm sure we can work together and come to.
I think the bulk of this difference is in that, um, undeveloped area, the restoration of that undeveloped area, so, you know, have, we'll have to have further discussions with Scott.
And by the way, that's not the rest of the whole property, that's just the area that I remeasured, so, yeah, you could double check that if you want.
We can, we can certainly look at that.
So take a look at that and we'll, uh, we'll readdress the, the bond issue in the future. Anything else?
No, I have a question, what is your projected schedules with D O T and anyone else outside of it?
So the, the, the D O T A D process is relatively straightforward and quick, we submitted that to them maybe a month or so ago, so I, we, I probably expect that to get processed in the next two months, just because they're incredibly slow right now, um, the, the D E P process, we did start that a little bit early, we had to make some modifications to it based on this, that's typically a six-month process, so I think we're, 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 um, cautiously optimistic that we'll have all permits in hand before the end of the year.
Did you hold that same optimism with your septic reviews of Walmart?
No, I did not, because I wasn't in control of that.
Okay. Anything else? All right, let's see, uh.
Great.
What we have for other public comments? All right, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please come down, name an address for the record.
Bernard Sippen, twenty-three West U Drive. I've looked at this piece of property for over eighty-seven odd years, and I've seen all kinds of things there, from farms to whatever going in there, I've seen some things that didn't want to go in there, and I see some things that like to go in there. I would have four criteria here, one of them would be traffic, I don't see a problem from what I hear, I don't see an unusual amount of traffic and trucks coming in and out of there anymore than would have been for anything else, and probably less than something else. Health-wise, septic-wise, it looks like they've taken care of it, inboards, onsite septic system from what I can see. Fire, I belong to a fire department, I'm sure there's sprinkler systems in that type of building, they're required, I presume. And I don't see anything else that would be a detriment to it, considering what was considered going to go in there before, I consider this here situation a home run for the town of Monroe, okay? I truly do, and the rest of the property that he has inside there, I would like to see them develop that also, there's a big green area there, and I'd like to see that coming there, I just hope that this here board doesn't impose upon him some work he shouldn't have to do, that he doesn't have to use, okay, such as sidewalks or something of that nature, they have enough problems trying to com- comply with everything else we have to do here, but that is a home run, and I would like to see the board look favoritely upon as far as I'm concerned, and I live not too far from it also, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sippen. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Please come down, name an address for the record.
Hi, um, my name is Kathy Lindstrom, two ninety-eight Guinea Road, um, every year for ten years Monroe adopts a new plan of development, it's to guide the land use, protect the property values, and the well-being of the residents of Monroe. Um, the application before the commission tonight is for a manufacturing facility on nine, approximately nine acres, um, with, um, fifty-five feet height on the building, and multiple extor- uh, accessory exterior storage silos at sixty-five feet. Other structures in town have been really, uh, limited to two and a half feet, um, two and a half stories or thirty-five feet high, I just question the change. Um, I also wonder whether the proposed silos meet or exceed the permitted amount of, of outside storage, uh, the proposed building is not at all aesthetically pleasing, one long continuous horizontal plane with nothing to break it up, it doesn't look like anything, um, we would envision for Monroe, doesn't look like Victorinox, and it doesn't look like Caruba, the building under construction on Pepper Street, where the commission itself required changes to the exterior to improve the aesthetics of the building. Although the land has been zoned industrial for many years, an application was approved, approved for Walmart, a commercial use, after the Walmart approval, plans for additional retail shops and, on parcels on and near Victoria Drive were submitted to P N Z, those approvals would have changed the entire nature of the development on Main Street, from industrial to commercial, and now that the anchor store Walmart is not happening, there'll be nothing to draw shoppers to the other proposed stores, what's the new plan? Will we continue to have industrial land on Route twenty-five, or will it be retail? Today, at the gateway to Monroe, there are unsightly mountains of dirt on Route twenty-five, they're there after years of moving the dirt, the earth around, the weeds are out of control along the road, they're shoulder height and taller, how long must a property go without being maintained or minimally are restored? I believe this facility would be more appropriate in the Pepper Street industrial zone, and why go through the, uh, lengthy and costly process of adopting a new plan of conservation development when it appears to me that it's the developers that are guiding the development in Monroe, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lindstrom. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Dr. John Iannarone, seventeen Country Ridge Drive, uh, we're just outside the five hundred foot radius, I just have some concerns, I heard, um, the dust issue, and I appreciate that that's being addressed, I am glad to hear that the Department of Environmental Protection will be involved, these particles, I have the material safety data sheet with me for the pozilite, it is a fifteen micron particle, and just to give you comparison, a grain of sand is anywhere from a hundred to a thousand microns, so this is an ultra-fine amorphous silica dioxide particle, and on the M S D S, certainly lung irritation, folks in the area talking about that spill from the truck, you have to worry about respiratory inflammation, so I'm, I'm, I guess I'm not as worried about it getting flushed into the storm drain as it is more like sand, but I'm really worried on a windy day if that were to happen, that this stuff is blowing around our neighborhood, and we did have that experience during, uh, the rock crushing operation, uh, that occurred, our homes were covered with dust, I know I had a neighbor whose pool was filled with dust, so I think this has to be taken seriously, and the developer has to be held to account to make, ensure that our health and safety are protected, and similarly with the groundwater contamination, um, these are bottles from pharmaceutical manufacturing, pharmaceuticals use a lot of toxic chemicals, and even, um, in the hospital, there are hoods these folks use sometimes, especially the chemotherapy bottles, so I'm worried about it being washed here and just kind of dumped into the, their holding tanks, I want to be sure that these are clean bottles, and can we trust that the company, Urban Mining, will ensure that this is clean glass that we're getting, and I think that's really important, and I think you folks have to hold them accountable to that, and the health department needs to monitor both air quality and water quality, we have wells, we're right up the hill. Again, the noise issue, a cyclone fan, I mean by its very name, I know we have strict noise regulations, but a twenty-four hour operation, even during the day, again, back to our experience with Mr. Kimball's rock crushing, it was noisy, you couldn't sit on your deck, it was noisy all the time, who's going to monitor the noise level, and who do we call if they're exceeding it, and I, I think, again, you folks need to be accountable, the town needs to be accountable to ensure that our, our quiet neighborhood is preserved as a quiet neighborhood, um, and lastly, light pollution was addressed, and I appreciate that, I want to say that it's a commendable operation, I think, I'm all for green, uh, projects, but is this the right locale versus the Pepper Street Industrial Park, as the previous speaker stated, um, and then again, the twelve thousand foot expansion that's listed on the plan, is that going to be just expanding this operation or what will be added to it, and I think that's an important question to answer, and lastly, the wetland remediation, I really appreciate your comments about that, sir, that I think I am concerned about that too, that, I mean, we're, we have a wetland, we, I, I think it's really important that wetlands is involved in this, even though they're just outside the hundred foot limit, that's all, and I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this application?
Good evening, my name is John Ray Pult, I'm at seventeen Pheasant Lane here in Monroe, I'm a director butter to the north of this project, I mean, I'm kind of resigned that it's a fact that something's going to happen behind us, but as an advocate for us, I really want you to look out for, for what's happening in that property, we heard there's going to be no adverse effects to the neighborhood, well, please make sure that doesn't happen, I mean, we've heard about noise, I mean, trucks coming in at night, second shift ends at midnight, or there're going to be trucks going out at eleven fifty-nine at night, um, in just the air quality, you know, winds blow, as Mr. Iannarone said, we got dust from the blasting operation, you know, just make sure it's quiet, we're not getting dust, we have pools, we have kids, we have pets, we're outside, uh, you know, it's a great, great facility, I mean, we need things like this, is this the right area in town for this, I mean, it's, it's the gateway to Monroe, Mr. Kimball owns property on Pepper Street where there's similar things going on that seem to be away from residential areas, maybe that's a consideration, but thanks for your time, and, and please look out for us, the neighbors, as, as this goes forward, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Commissioner, Greg Mizella, eighteen Pheasant Lane, I'm not going to hit on a lot of the same points that my, uh, my neighbors hit on, uh, but just a couple of quick questions to consider as we di- di- digest all this, is, uh, what's the anticipated length, uh, of time for disruption to neighbors from blasting instruction that's going to occur, uh, what precautions will be taken during the blast and protect, uh, the adjoining neighborhood, and, you know, we've all talked about the health already, obviously that's top of my mind, it's top of our neighbor's mind, what's going to happen if something gets blown around in the air, what, uh, you know, what studies have been done, what studies by a third party, not sponsored by Soli or by the company themselves, and independent, um, to kind of provide us some type of assurance that, uh, um, that our health is protected, and then finally, um, page seven of the project narrative states that the proposed manufacturing use offers a good solution to a successful business, which will contribute to the tax base, support infrastructure, schools, and help to stabilize property values in the greater community, I'm somewhat skeptical that a building of a manufacturing facility next to a residential neighborhood will stabilize values, in fact, I'm concerned about possible value declines in the adjoining neighborhood, I encourage the commission to fully explore the potential impact and request the applicant to provide evidence, such as the third-party appraisal that I, I talked about a moment ago, opinions or historical impacts to properties surrounding its other business locations, as, uh, Soli has stated, this seems to be the first of its kind, uh, I'm, that makes me even more skeptical, being the first, uh, it's always better to be the second than the first, um, but, uh, I'll leave on that, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone with general questions or comments? No one? Back to you, Mr. Soli.
Thank you, Chairman Porter, um, I, I think at this time, I, I think the, the comments and discussions have been great, I think what I'd, I'd like to request, since the hearing is obviously staying open, what we'll do is we'll, um, work on a formal response to staff's comments, we'll, we'll meet with staff as necessary, and we'll provide some revised information, additional information based on the discussions and the comments from the commission and from the public. the public. And we appreciate the consideration.
Mr. Solly, our next meeting is in three weeks, because August has five Thursdays. So would you have...
Twenty-eight would be the date.
What's that?
Twenty-eight would be the...
The twenty-eight could be the cutoff?
I'd like to try to work towards that. I think that's doable. I think we've already gotten a little bit of a head start with a lot of it. I think the discussion here has been tremendous. So I'd like to try to reserve a spot on the September 6th agenda, and then we can work with staff in the meantime. And then, if something comes up, we'll obviously grant any additional extensions if we have to push it past the 6th, but we can work with staff to finalize that.
All right. Anybody have any last-minute thoughts? All right, thank you, Mr. Solly. Continue to the 6th. Okay, next up, site plan reviews. Excuse me, could you please take any discussion out into the lobby? Site plan review, item number 11, SDP 2018-02, file number 128, 574 Monroe Turnpike. This has been adjourned to September 6th. Moving on, deliberations and determinations, time extensions. We have two. Thirteen-2 ZCA, file number 993D, 579 Main Street. And thirteen-1-SCP, file number 1518A, 579 Main Street. We received a letter from Russo and Rizzio LLC. This shall serve as a request on behalf of McDonald's Corporation for an additional extension of 90 days to record the special permit and boundary, and zone boundary change approval, approved by the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, originally dated August 29, 2013, which had previously been extended to December 30, 2016, further extended to April 1, 2017, then to June 30, 2017, then to December, September 28, 2017, then to December 27, 2017, then to March 27, 2018, then June 25, 2018, and then lastly, September 23, 2018, for the property located at 579 Main Street. If approved, the new deadline to record the approvals would be December 24, 2018. Will, anything to add to this?
One thing that I'm starting to get a little concerned about is they're running, not only in time to file the plans, but running out of time to build it. They're eating into a five-year thing, but I guess the next extension is maybe another five years.
Ken, you can't close that door.
Okay.
I think he's just yelling.
These are secure.
No!
It's kind of hard to hear in here, so... No, you can't close the door. It's got to stay open.
Thank you, Ken. All right, so you're concerned that their five-year limit...
Well, I just noticed that's down.
You scared them off.
Sorry. I mean, if this is right, right, the original one was, the approval was in 2013, right?
Yeah, so they are approaching their five-year limit.
How did they not already approach?
Wait a minute.
Oh, the approval was in 2013, but it was a standard because of the litigation about...
Right.
So we're only into two years of that.
Okay. All right, so we have a request for a 90-day extension, and we have a motion.
I move to grant the time extensions, thirteen-2 ZCA, file 993D, and thirteen-1 SCP, file 1518A.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All right, since we have all of our commissioners here tonight, we'll call the roll, starting with Mr. Mayne.
Mayne, yes. Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
Leecey, yes.
Riley, yes.
Okay. Next up, item number 13, bond leases reductions, we have none. Item 14, permit amendment modifications, we have none. Item 15, meeting minutes, August 2nd. We're tabling that for our next meeting. Item 16, pending application deliberations, determinations. We have a couple of draft approvals. First up is SUB 2018-01, file number 1263C, 96 and 112 Barnhill Road. You remember, this was a piece of property that was not entirely subdivided several years ago, 20 years ago, and it came to light when the property owners were looking to do some additional work on their properties. So they needed some ZBA approvals because their lots were not compliant, they received There's no other changes proposed to the properties, and we have prepared a draft approving their subdivision request, a re-subdivision request. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve SCP 2018-01, file 1263C, as drafted. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion. Ken and Ryan, Michael and Leon, and anyone? All right, so, yeah, Porter, O'Reilly, and Ambrosi, Wilk, and Condon are present for this. So you're temporarily seated, gentlemen.
What's up, guys?
All good.
All right, so, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further questions or comments?
We're not really making them jump through any crazy hoops, right?
No.
All right.
No, we made them get the ZBA approvals to take care of their non-compliant conditions, but that's really the only thing that they've been required to do. Any other questions? Call the roll, starting with Ryan.
Condon, yes.
Wilk, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Next up, we have SCP 2018-02, file number 1597A, 160 Shilton Road. This is a change of use to put the Sanza Trumpet Baptist Church in half of the building. Vargas is occupying the other portion of the building. We have some minor site and building alterations, replacement of the existing exterior lights with new fixtures. They're reducing the impervious area on the site. They've indicated that they have adequate parking for their proposed use. The apartment's pre-existing and will remain. Existing and proposed site use is not anticipated to include components which could generally impact by reasons of glare intensity, the flashing of light, fume, smoke, dust, or vibration or noise, building served by public water, and a septic system. The Health Department has inspected the septic system and found it to be suitable. There was some question about the location of the water line, it's going to be resolved with the engineer. They have adequate parking. And that pretty much wraps that up. We have the same people that were here that night, Ryan and Ken, you're seated for this one. So do we have a motion?
Move to approve SCP 2018-02, file 1597A, as drafted. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion.
Can I have it? Or can I have any input?
Your B. We let them go with no trees on the...
That's correct.
...property.
Let them go with their proposed landscaping. Nothing? Anyone? Call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Wilk, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
Riley, yes.
Anything else we should be deliberating on? Do you have anything else that you could... Okay, just want to make sure I'm not forgetting anything. Other business, item number 17, Revelations Review Amendment Work Session. Do we have another meeting scheduled? No. All right, let me check a few things on my schedule. Will, I'll get in touch with you and look at a couple of proposed dates, and I'll contact Michael and Leon, and we'll set something up. We have two weeks now, so I want to get at least one meeting. Correspondence, had it received. You all had a copy in your packet tonight. And since we're, since we are graced with the presence of our illustrious First Electmen, Mr. Kellogg, if you wouldn't mind coming down, I'd like you to be a part of this. Rather than me just... This is concerning the business and industry. I was negligent in not bringing this to your attention at our last meeting. That's strictly my shortcoming. But the First Electmen's setup, Will, Ken, why don't you tell the commission about what we have, what we're doing?
Sure. I think everyone's aware that a few months ago, I created the First Electmen's Business and Industry Advisory Committee. It's comprised of nine representatives representing different segments of business and industry throughout our community. It also has representation from this commission, with both your chairman and Mr. Ambrosi, also representation from the Economic Development Commission, and the Town Council, and of course, myself. And really, the purpose was to continue to have an ongoing forum for dialogue from our business community, from our industrial use, so a wide range of folks, to provide input on a wide variety of areas, not just potentially zoning issues, but also could be issues around that would be germane to Town Council, such as maybe our tax abatement ordinance and how that works, you know, any other types of issues around economic development and working with the Economic Development Commission. And obviously, a huge part of it is, of course, land use, so as relates to either regulations or process. And I'm sure you're all familiar that we have seen a lot of, a lot of interest in regulations, as evidenced by some of the recent meetings we've all been to, and a lot of the anecdotal stuff that comes to my office, which I've certainly shared over time. But we wanted to, I wanted to have a way to have ongoing dialogue that kind of formalized it and could really provide some cohesive input. So they had a few meetings, they've provided a couple of memos to my office as relates to some of the things that they would like the planning, you know, this commission to consider. And I think, and certainly, you know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think we've, we both were kind of appreciative of the fact that, you know, I think what they've looked for is categorical types of areas that they'd like the commission to explore, and it's not intended to be prescriptive. They're not giving you, hey, here's a, here's a text amendment we'd like to consider. They're saying, here's an issue that we'd like you to resolve, a concern that we'd like you to resolve. So that's really it. I, you know, I put a cover memo around that, so you can understand my perspective, where I was coming from. I encourage, really strongly encourage the commission to evaluate that, knowing the, you know, the things that you have to balance. But it is really important to our community, and it's something that I don't want to just wait for the POCD in some cases. I think we need to start looking at things and making incremental changes as we move forward, because there is a lot of interest in our community, but we still, we still have found areas where we are being asked to make it easier from not just process perspective, but also from regulatory perspective. So things like, you know, so we probably haven't, you know, the memos didn't touch these things, but other issues have come up, like, hey, what about the mixed use? What about, you know, those types of things? So, again, ask you to take it under consideration and hope that we can be responsive to the business and industry community, and find ways to make our community more vibrant and add to our, add to our commercial base without sacrificing our character in the zones that we have. So that's where that's at. So, and I know our next meeting, we're going to be talking more process-oriented issues, but I'm sure that as that committee goes forward, they'll have other, other areas that they will, will ask to refer to, and some may be P&amp;Z as well, and certainly bring those to you when the time comes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your consideration. Thanks.
So the, I'm going to refer to it as the committee. The committee sent forth two letters and memorandum. The first one was concerning parking, and some of their concerns that they would like us to look at are bullet pointed in the letter dated June 26th. Parking of vehicles used in the normal course of an allowed business, and that's an important word there, allowed business, in a specified zone should be allowed to be parked in the parking area of that business any time of day or night. That's something that's already in our regulation, and I believe that there was a misunderstanding on many of the committee members' parts about allowed businesses. You know, we have, we have some landlords who have rented out commercial space to companies that may or may not fall in line with approved uses in the zone. And then, when those companies want to park their vehicles on a subject commercial property, they're being told they can't, and it's not that the vehicles can't be parked there, but their use is not approved in that zone. So I think a lot of the people on the committee, when it was explained to them, they understood that that was part of the issue, not that the vehicles can't be parked there, it has to be an approved use, an allowed use. Policy should be adjusted to allow a land use office staff member to explain how parking can be arranged in the given instance, not simply advise them it's not allowed. That's, we have to work more towards finding solutions when people come in. Parking for vehicles used in the course of business should be allowed at any place in any suitable or approved parking area of the business. Town should give leeway in this regard to allow owner/tenant the ability to move vehicles to any appropriate spot in the parking area without having to file a new application. Again, they can park their vehicles so long as they don't impact their parking requirement. You know, if the, if a particular piece of property has to have, by use and by our parking standards, has to have 50 parking spaces, and a tenant parks 20 vehicles there, they're impacting their parking, available parking for customers or people, you know, coming to their businesses. So that's, that's something that needs to be...
Are they suggesting that if there's, you know, pavement there, they should be able to park? If it's not striking?
They would like us to look at some possibilities.
Overflow parking, is that what they're suggesting?
They're looking for some relief, and I think that what we have to do is, we'll start with the subcommittee, is we have to look at our parking standards and look at different scenarios where businesses have X number of vehicles that they want to park on the property, and we have to see how it impacts the available parking. So it's something that we have to take a look at. And that was the purpose of these memos, is the business community is identifying what they perceive to be... And that, that was the purpose of these memos is the, the business community is identifying what they perceive to be problems or issues and they're asking us to take a look at it and see how we can help resolve some of these problems or issues. Um, the commission should be requested to review the regulations concerning parking and outdoor storage as it appears this has caused issues for owners when enforcement of storage regulations has affected their ability to park their vehicles and equipment in their parking areas. And all of our suggestions in this regard are based on the business being an approved business for the zone. And again, that's an important part of it. And for vehicles commonly used for such an approved business.
With the outdoor storage, are they, are they using the parking places to store outdoor storage?
That's, you know, if it's a, if it's a limited area to begin with and parking spaces are being used up for outdoor storage, we have to see how that impacts the, the overall use of the property.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, one thing I think is, um, relates very closely to some of the earlier comments you had and it relates to the, the approved, what the approved business is, uh, is I would, I would really encourage the, the commission, the subcommittee and the commission to, to evaluate how we approach some of our districts, our current districts that are primarily retail, uh, focused currently. Um, what, the, the input we've heard over and over again is that, and I think I mentioned this in my cover memo, is that we need to recognize that retail is changing, uh, not just in Monroe, but across the state, across the country. And, um, areas that have been traditionally retail focused and zoned to support retail, um, in some cases are not accommodating some of the other, cannot accommodate some of the other businesses that are growing, such as the service sector. So, I think one of the examples that came up happened to be a service business that couldn't park their vehicles there. And it really hadn't, as you said, when you, when you drilled down, it had nothing to do with the vehicles, was the fact that, that business really wasn't approved use in that zone. So, um, one of the things I'd like the commission to explore is how we evaluate our areas that have been historically retail and is there a way to add flexibility and accommodate the, the, the future of what, um, commercial might, might be? And there, you know, we may be moving into a more service oriented pseudo-retail environment.
There's no doubt that, that the traditional retail use is, is not going to increase in our commercial zones. Traditional retail is dying, we explode that. So, we have to, I think we have to be in front of it and find some other uses, like, like Ken said, that are not too intrusive on, on what we already have as uses in the zone, but we can expand the uses in the zone. Like the exterminator.
That's the perfect example, right? Right.
It's, it's a low impact.
Right.
It's not a, it's not a company that installs septic tanks, you know, it's, it's somebody that has a few vehicles, goes out and does their business. But, um, we have to look at more ways that we can give our property owners the ability to lease out their space, but still maintain some control on our, on our business zones.
Precisely, thanks.
And then the second memo dated July twentieth, um, concerns staff level approvals. And this is something that, um, I mean, this is something that we've been kicking around for at least a couple of years.
Didn't we just change that?
No.
Never did it.
No, it, we've never really done anything, we've, we've talked about it, but we've never done anything. But, you know, there, there are certain things if, um, if a retail store has, uh, someone that sells buttons and they close and somebody that is coming in that wants to sell ties, um, you know, staff should just be able to sign off. We do. But maybe I'm simplifying it too much. We have to, we have to give staff more authority to do administrative approvals on things rather than making people come to the commission for.
And just to lay the seed, because the discussion that we have had on that is that we need some good clarity of where staff has the ability to do things because, you know, when you're in a position of someone coming to you and you're sort of the person making the decision and it's one, two people, it's a pretty big responsibility. So, the more clear we are about those thresholds, the better, I think, for everybody. So, it makes it easy for those people who are getting those approvals and for those who are making the approvals.
Well, I think, I think if, if you grant the approval, there's never going to be a problem. It's, it's only if you say that, you know, if you're not getting the approval, then they come to the commission.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, when things, when things are a little gray, you know, you think you have an interpretation, you do it for a while and everyone's happy and then somebody comes in and they're at the edge and, and you don't make that decision and that's when you have the problem. So, the more clear we can, and you can do this, I mean, we, we've looked at drafting some of that stuff already. Um, you know, for instance, if you wanted to throw to staff, even in a building addition, you know, you can put a threshold of, uh, five hundred square feet, a thousand square feet, or, or disturbance of five thousand square. You know, things like that that become pretty clear thresholds that everyone understands. So, it's not me convincing somebody what the threshold is.
Yeah.
So, I, I think we can do that and that would be helpful for everybody.
Minor modifications to approvals to, I think, all the same, same bolt mark.
I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry, I think, you know, sometimes there's requests for like minor modifications to prior approvals and if there's a way to quantify that where it's within an appetite that you'd be comfortable with, I think that would be helpful as well because the complaint that I get often is, I got a, you know, whole new application fee, all new, you know, just like, and, and the time.
The only slippery slope to that one is, there is built into the approvals, fuel change. Fuel changes are related to things you didn't know were going to happen.
Right.
The, when you have an approval from the commission, the slippery slope gets to be is as they go through their valid engineering or construction, they see how to do things differently, that's natural, nothing unnatural about it. But, sometimes it's like, you don't want to depart too far from the commission's approval because what's the point going to the commission?
Correct. I agree, there has to be parameters and it's got to be clear, but just another component of that.
One, one thing that I'm a little concerned about is, um, one of the problems that we had doing that, um, is a lot of times, someone comes in with an application and, you know, they need something that's, you know, it's a minor application, so it may need a minor, you know, you need a bollard here, you need this there, you know, put a piece of curb in it, make a, uh, put a handicap ramp in. And, um, the only thing I'm a little concerned about is that in our efforts to help out and make it more expeditious, sometimes the applicant gets mad at us that we're creating, you know, who are they to ask that we have to do this? Whereas if a commission is saying that to them, they don't, they don't really, they can't really question it. So, all I'm saying at this point is.
No, sometimes, Scott, sometimes Scott, too, it's not what you're saying, it's how you're saying it.
I, believe me, I've been doing this for a lot of years, I know that.
I can give you, you know, we can probably do an administrative approval on this today if we do this, this and that. But if you don't want to do that, then we're going to have to go to the commission.
Right, and that's where I was going. So, all I'm saying is, is that I just wanted to ask for your help in supporting us if we're doing that. More than happy to do it and I think it's a good idea and we can get some stuff done administratively. But, when the inevitable complaint comes, and they will come, because I've done it, I've done it in the past and I know that there will be complaints that we are overextending and stuff like that. And, you know, we're going to obviously try to be reasonable. But, there'll be times when they're going to come to you and, and possibly, or we might have to kick it to the commission. I'm just saying, please communicate with us, that's all. And, and give us a chance to tell you what we're asking for, why we're asking for it. And then we'll talk about it and there may be cases where we do have to, you know, dial it back or something like that. Uh, but I'm just pointing out that that, that, it, that issue is there, that's something real that we might have to give a heads up.
And then the other thing is bond releases. You know, again, we should, the majority of, of our bond releases come to us, you do a bond report or, or, you know, someone from your department goes out and does an inspection, everything's good, everything checks off. Scott says, they're done, we should release the bond. You know, if, if things are clear cut like that, then we have to set up a system where you can just release the bond. There, there's no sense in delaying it or, you know, you have to wait two weeks to come to the commission. I mean, if a project is done and you're signing off saying, this project is done, I see, I recommend you release the bond. It's just a formality for us to say, okay, release the bond.
Maybe what you could do too is, um, like at Wetlands, we put, um, uh, on the agenda, we just list the ones that we've released and you just know about it, but we've already done it. So, it's a reporting.
It's, it's on the record.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's, that's fine.
And then what we can do is sometimes, um, some of the more complicated sites, there, there, um, there are a few where, where we could release the bond, but there are things that are a little different. And I'll just have to, we'll have to use our judgment on that, I mean, you, you.
I'm not saying every bond release gets signed off by you. You know, if there's something that.
We have to kick it with.
You know, you feel that, you know, a person, a certain portion of the work is not completed. We, we have to set up some guidelines.
Yeah, like for instance, if, if there's a little variation and it doesn't change the scope of what you approve, then we go ahead and do it. If they're, they've done something that, you know, changes the scope, then obviously it's something.
That really doesn't anything do with the bond, that hasn't to do with how they finished the project or not.
Well, it, it, it actually does have something to do with the bond because it, there are a lot, there are a number of cases where there are things that, that are okay, but they're different from what you approved. And you're going to need to kind of see that. I mean, we've got one coming to them soon.
So, those are issues that.
But we could definitely, we could definitely.
We'll delve into after we straighten out the chickens.
Well, thank you, I was so, I'm so glad you said that. I was going to ask you for one more minute of your time, it's not germane to the, the Business and Industry Committee, but, um, I did want to share that I have gotten, uh, at least three separate inquiries about where are we with the chickens. And I know that you are.
I've told, I've told people that it's at the top of our list.
I, I know that, I know that you've got the package of text amendments that's currently going through the process. I would simply, uh, ask for your assurance that you are going to continue to endeavor to address that immediately after that next round so that I can continue to relay that to the public when they come to.
It is on the top of the list. Once we get through with our current.
Chickens and then go.
We don't need chickens.
We want, we want to allow them. They're restricted, we want to not restrict them.
There are, there's a segment of the Monroe population who would like to have chickens be allowed on one acre of parcels and that's what the commission has to evaluate.
And I think some, perhaps like to have one before, two acre and more, yeah.
Yes, there.
It's, it's, it's currently limited to two acres.
In two thousand thirteen, I said chickens shouldn't be lumped in with livestock.
Right.
I went on the record then and it, it didn't get corrected, so.
You have chickens?
We should be mindful of that.
No, but you know what, my, my wife, my wife actually wants, yes, she's gotten to.
How much property do you have?
I have two acres, so.
Well, then you can have, go for it.
Have as many chickens as you want.
There's still eleven, you have eleven.
You'll be, you'll be busy.
I, she'll be busy.
So, for one, is it, what about peacocks? Because I have a neighbor who has a peacock.
That's labor.
Is a peacock a chicken?
Labor every day. It's a completely different bird and they're noisy.
Anyway.
Peacocks and chickens.
If you have my word, that's on the top of our list.
Thank you.
Once we get through our current endeavor.
Thank you.
Alright, so that, that wraps up that, we'll, we will first address this in subcommittee. And once we develop, uh, some proposed ideas, we will present it to the entire commission. Commission reports, I have nothing new to report. Um, any commissioners have anything to report? Staff have anything to report?
I have no anything.
So, it's, okay.
Ken's getting chickens.
Well, our next meeting is in three weeks.
I'll be here.
We'll see.
Taking a hold of my ground. Want you to adjourn?
Is that for the record?